The Municipality of Argyle Committee has a whole meeting for Tuesday, June 25, 2013. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, I guess?
There's one late addition, Comos Hill Cemetery District Community Grant, 9A2.
So, Comos Hill.
Cemetery.
Any other additions? Having heard none, anybody?
I've been in motion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Conflict of interest declarations. Anybody have a conflict of interests with the agenda? Having heard none, we will move on to number three, presentations. First one is CBDC Temperature and Solar Radiation Study, Mr. Chris Atwood. Can you take the mics?
Thank you very much, Kelvin. As I say, this is sort of a follow-up to last year's presentation. This is, we're in our second year of a three-year climate data project. So, again, we received the information from the climate data report, or the compilation, back in March by our, the organizations that are pulling this together for us, which is really the College of Geographical Sciences out of Lawrence Town and Perenia, or formerly AgriPoint. So, they're the ones who are working to pull together the information, the report. A copy of this report was brought to the municipal council back in, I think we brought it in April, and it's my pleasure to, you know, just talk to you very briefly about what our findings are and what's going on. And we did send you out a copy of a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm not going to speak to that, but really, as I say, I wanted to encourage folks. We do have a public session happening at Burrage Campus tomorrow, in which we have John Lewis, who is a berry crop specialist, who's been involved with this project, talking about, you know, the findings and the potential for agriculture development in southwestern Nova Scotia, based on what we're finding out of this climate data report. So, basically, a little bit of a, I'll just do a little bit of a history analysis of CBDCs. CBDCs are basically across Canada, we're part of what's called the Community Futures, and there's 269 community future organizations across Canada. Forty-one CBDCs in Atlantic Canada, and here in Nova Scotia, there are 13 CBDCs in Nova Scotia. We are independent, nonprofit corporations, and governed by local volunteer boards of directors. So, basically, as I say, we as an organization, we're a community development organization, primarily, we support business by providing loans to them. The agriculture project that we've, that is sort of a project that three CBDCs have been working on, which is ourselves, CBDC Yarmouth, CBDC Shelburne, and CBDC Queens-Lunenburg, has been working on, is a collaborative effort based on our past lack of understanding of climate in southwestern Nova Scotia. We've always felt that we have a very unique climate, but we really didn't understand how it worked. So, really, as I say, or, you know, what components, in many cases, people come here and they would say that we're a foggy destination, or there's a lot of fog and a lot of rain. What we've found over the past two years with our climate data project is that, now mind you, it's based on 2011, 2012, which have been fairly warm and dry in regards to, in regards to climate. So, as I say, we're expecting to extend this project over the next five years, but really, as I say, we're finding that from a, from a growing perspective, from a heat unit perspective, and from a sunlight perspective, southwestern Nova Scotia has some very unique climate conditions. It lends itself very well to some high-value agriculture crops, such as grape production, stone fruits like pears, or like peaches and plums and things like that. So, we're excited about what this, this report is showing to us. Again, the applications for it, it's, it's very in-depth, and really, as I say, any, and what we're doing with it now, is that we're taking it out to various commodity groups and industry agriculture leaders and agriculture commodity groups, and presenting these reports to them at their annual, at their organizations' annual general meetings, to try and encourage some agriculture development here in southwestern Nova Scotia. So, in a nutshell, that's the climate data project. You know, we're in our two, in two years of a three-year project. Our expectations is that we're going to hopefully carry it through for possibly year four and year five, but the information that we're finding is very encouraging, and we're taking this out to various industries, agriculture industry and commodity groups, and trying to encourage new development in southwestern Nova Scotia. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Chris Atwood?
I was looking at your map, I think that was showing the soil types for growing. A lot of it is still white, like, what does that mean? It just wasn't done?
Well, as I say, the soil maps that we're trying, again, the soil maps that are in existence today were done back in the 60s, and very much, they're textural maps. So, and again, like, unlike other parts of the province, like up the valley way, there's a very good understanding of the soil, the soil systems, or the soil conditions up the valley. In southwestern Nova Scotia, there's very little, very much the same as a climate, very little was really known until we started this, this project, this microclimate data project. So, really, as I say, we're mapping, we're able to map, you know, the, the microclimate zones throughout the, throughout the whole of southwestern Nova Scotia, which is, which is an important tool for agriculture developers, much the same, I mean, a lacking component is, is in the soils component, and that's something we want to address in potentially Phase Two of this project.
Okay. Any, any other questions? I guess, having heard none, so thank you very much, Chris.
Oh, you're very welcome, and I encourage anybody who wants to hear about some of the potential developments, would, I encourage them to come to the Burrage Campus tomorrow at 6 o'clock, and the berry crop specialist will be talking about the climate data project in much more detail than I can.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the second presentation, Healthy Eating in the Recreation Setting, with Jeanette D'Ensermont, representing the Municipality of Argyle. We have Debbie Smith with Nova Scotia Health and Wellness, is that correct, Debbie?
That's correct.
And I.
Jane Cunningham, she's Public Health Nutritionist with Southwest District Health Authorities.
Great, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you very much, we're very happy to be here tonight. I'll give a little bit of background to where we're trying to head. So, who we are, we're representing tonight a partnership that consists of Southwest Health, Public Health Services, the Yarmouth-Shelburn Municipal Recreation Directors Association, and the Department of Health and Wellness Regional Services. So, what we did is, we formed a little working group about three years ago, and started to look at, what are we doing around healthy eating in our communities? To what extent are our venues and recreation facilities and municipal settings providing healthy options? And there were lots of success stories, but there were lots of challenges and difficulties in sustaining healthy eating opportunities. So, we decided that we would continue on in a partnership to try and change the environment in which children and adults were coming to recreate. So, what we did, about a year and a half ago, we made presentations to the recreation committees and commissions in each of the municipal units or the CAOs, where there were no recreation committees, to talk about the importance of healthy eating environments. We also did focus groups with managers, both volunteers and paid, who provide food services in communities throughout Yarmouth and Shelburne. We wanted to get at, what are the issues, the challenges, to what extent are you already serving and preparing and offering healthy choices, and what kind of support would you need to improve on what you're doing? We also, in addition, held three workshops for community members and organizations to promote healthy eating, and what you need to consider, healthy recipes, how to deal with leftover waste, special event menu planning, and so those were quite successful. In addition, we wanted to get a gauge on, what was the public saying about healthy eating in our communities? And so, we worked with Nova Insights to do a survey in Yarmouth and Shelburne Counties of 300 adults, and to find out about the behaviors, the motivators, and their attitudes around healthy eating. So, the survey said, which was very interesting for us, 75% of the survey sampled indicated that they wanted healthier choices in recreation and municipal settings. 69% said they would purchase, pay for healthier choices if they were available, and the top three factors that influenced food choices for individuals were fresh, had it before and liked it, and that sounds like a typical Nova Scotian response, definitely, but the third factor was if it was a healthy choice. So, that certainly was concerning, but also recognizing that the public is looking for those healthier options. So, just in terms of, for this presentation, what do we mean by healthy foods? Because there could be all sorts of definitions. But they're food and beverages from one of the four food groups: veggies and fruits, grain products, milk and milk alternatives, and meat and meat alternatives, that are low in fats, both saturated and trans fats, and low in sugar, and also low in sodium. So, why are we here tonight? To invite council to consider participating in policy development to create supportive healthy eating environments. So, what surrounds us shapes us. Research is clear that the food environment and landscape do impact the health of communities. You can go to any town or city and see areas such as fast-food alleys. We hear about choice, we hear a lot about choice. Choice is important, but good choices are not always possible in our environment. We know that environments can determine what people will eat, whether people will eat healthy. So, we have the big, the cheap, and the easy. So, our current food landscape is all about big, cheap, and easy food. The industry's ways of responding to our demands for value for the dollar are quick meals. The food industry needs people to purchase a lot of food in order for them to make profit. These profits are made at the expense of our health. Food portions have leaped in recent years, many popular food choices are now double or triple their former size, so double the sugar, double the fat, double the salt. We double down, we tuna Tuesdays, upsizing, and freezers filled with convenience, frozen dinners. So, we have cheap, easy, and convenient. Oh, oh, went the wrong way, sorry. Traditional vending. Vending machines often carry foods and beverages that are high in sugar, fat, and sodium. Oftentimes, there are no choices that have any nutritional value at all. Packaged food does not always have to necessarily mean unhealthy foods, so this can change. Your traditional concession stands are all too typical concession areas, that are often in small spaces with limited access to equipment to keep fresh food cold and prepare it. High fat, sugar, and salt is highly convenient if you are the operator, but where is the So, we have physical activity has been engineered out of our lives. On the other side of the energy balance equation, we have constructed towns and cities that actively encourage car use or discourage physical activity with escalators taking us to our destination without breaking a sweat. Ironically, having engineered activity out of our day, we have to replace it with organized activity, but even then, our busy lifestyles mean that nutrition offers, suffers as we struggle to get our children out the door to their soccer game or hockey practice. The cereals. There's a clear evidence of the link between exposure to advertising and unhealthy eating and weight gain in children. Marketing has a negative impact on children's food choices. Food and beverage companies aggressively market to children. The majority of foods and beverages marketed to children are product, products, high in sugar, fat, and sodium. Canadian kids are targeted with more television food ads than 10, than kids in 10 other countries, including the US. The exposure of children to food marketing is massive and begins early. By age two, children start asking parents to buy specific items, and by age four, before knowing how to read, children recognize hundreds of brand logos. So, is it good for you? Consumers need to be more nutrition savvy and literate than ever before. We cannot rely on the media and marketing messages to take, to be taking care of our health for us. This demonstrates that the calories and fat content of the cookies is higher than the sub itself, which is considered a default choice or a side to the main meal. This mean, this meal that claims to be good for you contains over 90, 900 calories and 33 grams of fat. There's a, there is big money in these products. The advertising prod, prod, the advertising budget for Coca-Cola at 2.2 billion is more than the entire budget of the World Health Organization. Hockey and burning it off. In the, our hockey example, we have one hour of activity, assuming that the young lad plays a full 60 minutes, which is highly unlikely, would burn 290 calories. The typical snack after the hockey would result in 708 calories with no, with no or little redeeming nutritional value. If you do the math, even working hard, he still can't burn off the chips, the chocolate bar, and the sports drink he consumes as a snack afterwards.
So, are we able to burn it all off? No, in that situation, you can't. So, that means we really have to work our buns off. So, a typical meal at a fast-food restaurant, you can see the caloric amount there, 1,440 calories, and we often treat this meal as a snack. You might see that this is advertised as a little snack. So, in order to burn that off, you would have to walk slow for eight hours, moderately for six hours, or briskly for five hours. And we know that that will happen when pigs fly. So, right now, we're in a position where what we're consuming is driving our need to be physically active, instead of the food being the fuel to help us be healthy and to help us to be physically active. So, let's talk a little bit about chronic diseases. So, we know that unhealthy eating, being overweight or obese, and being physically inactive, leads to chronic diseases such as diabetes, cardiovascular disease, cancer, and also things like depression, anxiety, and sleeping disorders. So, we know that Nova Scotia has some of the highest rates of these chronic diseases in all of Canada, and our youth are being diagnosed with diabetes at young ages, when about 20 years ago, you would never hear of a child being diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. So, ask yourself, what does this mean for the health and the sustainability of our communities? Our economy, our province, our workforce, are they going to be healthy citizens? So, let's create some balance. Let's make it easy for people to make the healthy food choice. And so, what do we mean by that? What we mean is changing the environment around us. So, if we only focus on teaching people how to eat healthy, so that education piece is important, but it doesn't always lead to behavior change, when we're living in an environment where we're surrounded by unhealthy food choices. We can't practice what we've learned about healthy food and healthy eating if we don't actually have the food there to choose. So, what is a supportive healthy eating environment? What does that look like? So, the quote here talks about, it's more than just making healthy foods available, it's put, not putting the onus on people to resist their environment. So, when you go and you see an apple beside a chocolate bar and you're resisting, you know you should eat the apple, but you're feeling like, oh, boy, that chocolate bar looks really good. So, we don't want people to have to go and resist, we want it to be easy for them to make the healthy choice. So, what we know is that policy work in terms of health have made significant health changes. So, if you look at seatbelt legislation is one example, where that legislation has saved a lot of lives. Also, tobacco is another one, so there are a lot of policies and legislation around tobacco, and where Nova Scotia used to be one of the provinces with the highest rates of smoking, it's now one of the lowest in, in the country. So, those are some really good examples of how creating some policy has really impacted the health of our communities. So, we currently have some existing work, or existing policies that are promoting healthy eating. So, we have healthy eating standards for childcare centers and within the school setting. So, that allows students to be surrounded by healthy foods when they are in those settings. There are two new recreation facilities in Nova Scotia, so there's one in Truro and one in Lunenburg, and when they opened, they opened with a healthy eating policy as well. So, that means when you walk into their facility, you should see a lot more healthy food choices instead of a lot of the unhealthy food choices. And also, four municipalities in Lunenburg County passed policies last year to deter, to dictate, or not to dictate, but to set a standard for what types of foods are available within the recreation setting. And there's also lots of work happening in other public settings and institutions, such as district health authorities, universities and colleges. The Department of Health and Wellness is piloting a policy within the government itself. There's a provincial committee that's working around creating a framework for what a healthy eating policy could look like within the recreation and municipal setting. And municipalities in Clare and Digby, this has happened most recently, are currently developing a policy. So, they've approved and made the go-ahead to have a policy within the recreation and municipal settings as well. So, when we started the presentation, Jeanette was talking about, you know, what shapes us, surrounds us, so what, what around, what is around us can influence what choices we make. So, we're asking you at the end of the presentation, what shape will we take?
So, basically, what we would like to know is, are you interested in taking the next step to work to develop a policy for healthy eating in municipal and recreation settings? We would recommend that the Municipality of Argyle support YSMRA in principle, with moving ahead to develop a policy for healthy eating in municipal and recreation settings. And we will also recommend that the Municipality of Argyle appoint a member of council to join a healthy eating in municipal and recreation settings policy reference group that will consist of representatives from councils in Yarmouth and Shelburne Counties.
Do we have any questions? Or did you have something else to add?
Nope.
Question, Councilor Sorette.
I don't know if this question goes to Debbie or Jeanette. Two things, did you, probably Debbie would, could answer this, but did you check with, I mean, healthy eating costs money, let's face it, to eat healthy? Did you meet with any groups of people that can't afford, that can't afford to eat healthy because it costs too much? Is there such an issue?
Um, there is, food costs money, and all foods cost various amounts of money. So, do we want to pay it, so that we're paying heavy taxes because we're unhealthy, or do we want to pay for healthier food? But in Lunenburg County, when the municipal councils explored this issue, that was a concern, and so what they wanted to do was make sure that their food offerings would not be very expensive, so that, what could you do to look at prices? Could you add a surtax on the unhealthy options? Could you even it out? Could you get sponsorship for certain food places that you would be serving? So, that was a consideration in the development of the policy, and to have food that's healthy but that is too expensive won't make the difference in the environment that we're trying to make.
Thank you.
I was in the grocery store the other day, and I was looking to buy some cranberry juice. I drink some every day, and I, I love it. I looked at the diet one, I usually buy the diet one. Well, it was low in sugar, but it was high in salt. I looked at the regular one, it was low in salt and high in sugar. I, I couldn't believe, you know, well, I said, I'd rather have the sugar than the salt, I think, right now. I don't like either one, but it seemed like I didn't have much of a choice.
Yeah, and, and so, it is really confusing for people to make the healthy choices sometimes because you're getting mixed messaging from the food industry itself, but also, when you're reading the labels, you're having a hard time picking out, you know, between what's good and what's not. So, a policy or a standard that would fit within the recreation setting would actually help people so that they don't have to kind of go through that, well, should I buy this or that, if they know that we've already gone through that process for them, and that we have the healthy foods there.
I'm taking medication for high blood pressure, so I said, I'd rather have the sugar. I don't have a problem with sugar, so.
Thank you. Councilor Blan.
I guess, I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification on what exactly you guys are looking from us tonight. Healthier eating in a recreation setting, I guess, do you mind touching on what, what type of recreational setting you're talking about, like strictly in, in staff point of view, or what is it, I guess, that you're, you're pushing here?
So, pushing. Were the pushers out there?
Well, I've been better than her.
Someone has to. So, the recreation setting is varied in every municipal unit. So, what we're talking about is the municipal setting, so council meetings, special events that the municipality would host, but then also, if you have facilities, and I know the Municipality of Argyle doesn't have very many facilities, but they have some outdoor facilities, and so if food services were provided there. The other area is in your programming, so summer day camps to have, make sure that the food that's provided is healthy in that setting. So, it applies to vending machines, cafeterias if you have them, special events, programs, indoor/outdoor facilities, and any opportunity where food and beverages are being provided or served or made available.
Right on. Thanks, actually, that, that clears it up quite well. So, basically, anything the municipality kind of governs or whatnot, you're looking to implement a policy that would, would provide solely healthy, healthy foods, I think?
We're hoping that you would walk the journey with us to implement a policy.
Right. Great.
Pushing, pushing.
I've been called worse.
I didn't mean to insult you.
Any other questions? So, you're also looking for, to, for council to appoint a.
A member.
A member?
Yes.
And what type of timeframe are you looking, I guess, so we know when we can appoint, or I guess, discuss?
Has anybody else appointed members yet?
So, this is the seventh in eight presentations, and we sort of saved the best for almost last. And, and in those municipalities, four have said they want to go the journey, and two, we haven't heard the response back yet. But we were hoping that all the municipalities would make a decision by the end of June, so that we would be able to have, it's called a reference panel, so individual would be able to sit on that panel to have input into the actual policy itself, and then to reflect that back to the councils. So, we are hoping that some of the work would start during the summer.
Okay, thank you. This is, I'm just trying to figure out the logistics of our meeting.
Yeah, I think it's the last one to do.
CEO Muse.
This would be the last meeting before the end of June.
Okay, so, we will discuss it later on, is that what we're going to do?
That, that's definitely an option. Whatever you.
It's, it's just not on the agenda.
Nope, it can be discussed now or deferred to later in the agenda. It's your call.
Well, I guess we might as well discuss it now, because if we do have questions, they are still here.
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Sorette.
For myself, I, I think that, I think it's a great idea what you, what you've presented us tonight. I think the only thing on my part, to just all of a sudden jump in and say, yes, yes, we're going to do this, you know, without maybe sitting back and thinking about it a little more, and just all of a sudden, yes, we're going to do this, and for a fee, nobody knows where they're going. I think it's a little too quick for myself, that's. I think it's a little too quick for myself. That's my whole idea of this. If you had given us like maybe a month, a month, like maybe, you know, to think about it, where we have more meetings and that, but all of a sudden, you know, we come here and we, you know, I'd certainly like to discuss a little more about it before we want to jump in. But that's only my opinion.
Councilor Donaldson.
Appointing a member or asking for a volunteer to go to first few meetings and then perhaps we can decide like if we want to implement the program or something, if that's what Jean is referring to. But I don't think it's too early to appoint somebody to get the ball started, I guess. Who's the healthiest person of council?
Councilor Albright.
I'm not the healthiest person, but I'd be willing to sit on that committee.
Okay.
Referring was Donaldson.
So, Councilor Albright has volunteered to go on the committee. Anybody else?
I seconded that motion.
Or you probably have to make the motion.
I made the motion to appoint Councilor Albright to the Healthy Eating Policy Committee.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Confering, okay, carried. Thank you.
So, if I might clarify, this isn't to approve a policy tonight. It's to approve in principle a policy development process and by naming Nicole to participate with us. So, she would be involved in providing that two-way dialogue and the input. So, are we to understand then that's approval in principle of pursuing policy development?
Okay. Councilor Muse.
My question was answered there. That was my question. I want to know if by doing that, we weren't approving the policy as such. We were just going to be studying it with the committee. So, she answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Having heard none, I guess that'll be the end of your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for giving your time for us. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number four, which is Outstanding Citizen Award Presentation. The first presenter is going to be Councilor Kathy Book. So, we'll get her to step up to the mic.
I'm going to ask Gary to step up to the stand with me. Gary, on behalf of myself and the residents of our district and the entire municipality of Argyle, I would like to present to you with this Outstanding Citizenship Award in recognition of your extraordinary act of heroism and your quick thinking on the February the 6th. And we thank you very much and we can't say thank you enough. Thank you, Gary.
I'll now ask Councilor Lucy Adelblanc to step up, please.
First off, I'd like to thank Sharon and especially Alvin for being here. Alvin, if I'm not mistaken, is a resident of Lake Echo, I believe, just outside of Dartmouth. But on the evening of February 16th, you happened to be in Westport, your native village, if I'm not mistaken. Just to give a little bit of a background, there's a home that burnt that evening in Westport. And Sharon, as well as Alvin, were, happened to be passing by that evening. I shouldn't touch too much on the details myself because I wasn't there. I don't want to, I don't want to be incorrect, but I don't want to think what would have happened if it wouldn't have been for Alvin and Sharon being there that evening. The outcome could have certainly, certainly have been different in a very negative way. Everyone escaped the home safely and without you two, things could have gone a lot differently. So, I appreciate you guys being here this evening and I appreciate what you did that evening. So, on behalf of myself, the residents of the district, as well as the residents of the entire municipality, it's with great honor that I can present to you tonight these Outstanding Citizenship Awards in recognition of your extraordinary act of heroism and quick thinking on the evening of February 16th. So, Sharon, maybe if you want to come up first. Appreciate it and thanks again. Again, I appreciate you making the trek to come receive this award. I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. We, I think it's a short picture of Sharon. You were great. Sure. I think it's a great idea.
At this time, Councilor Kathy Book is going to give us a few more details, I guess, of what happened. Go ahead.
I guess I forgot to mention, Gary, what you did. I guess one afternoon, there was a, Gary went late. He usually goes in the woods early and it was late that day, weren't you? And he saw a car turned over upside down in the ditch in the Oak Park Road, we call home. And there was a woman and two children. And they're upside down and the water was filling, the car was filling with water. And you, you were there by yourself and chance that you were late that day.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and you, you got them out safely, you brought them home and your wife took care, helped you take care of them and, and that's what you did. And you never thought of anything else, you just did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I was on a rhino. I just got right into the bronchus. It didn't bother me much until I, until I get to the house and it hit me.
Yeah, and it was cold and you were wet as well as them. And I don't know, they were probably, would have froze. The woman, huh?
The woman had like probably another 10 minutes because they're, we were in the air and she was trying to pull herself up. She was like in the middle of the bronchus. The kids were like on the edge, they were in the cars. They were another 10 minutes because she was getting her hand for cold and everything. I made her pull her hand up. Unbelievable.
Well, thank you, Gary.
Just to, just a point of clarification, I know Gary said he was riding a rhino, but a rhino is a four-wheel ATV, not an actual rhino.
Wild animals in these public places.
All right. And, okay, Councilor LeBlanc, you have something to add?
Yeah, I just, while Kathy was kind of touching on her story, I just thought I'd ask, I didn't dare mention the details of that evening because I wasn't there myself, but I thought maybe I'd ask you guys, just like the gentleman did here just now, maybe to say a quick word of what happened exactly that evening, if it's, to no offense to you guys. If I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, you both sort of arrived roughly at the same time because you seen flames coming out of the home. Is that correct?
Yes, I was on my way back to Lake Echo.
Okay.
And as I dropped by, flames were shooting down the windows. So, I stopped, ran in, knocked on the door, nobody answered, so I tried the door, got in, hollered at it. And finally, I saw a little girl come out the kitchen and looked over, there was two little boys over there. And I told them they had to get out, their house was on fire. And I asked the older boys if there was anybody else in the house. And they said, yes, there was two more in the back though. So, I'm trying to get the kids that were there out, coming out and I looked out and Sharon was at the road and I said, I need help. There was six kids and I can't handle it. Sharon came over and gave us a hand and let them get them out.
Is that right?
Within 15 minutes, the house was gone. They did not even know they were on fire.
The fire was upstairs, if I understood correctly, and the children were downstairs. Could have came tumbling down without them knowing.
Yes.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It was, yeah.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on now to number five, business arising from the minutes.
It's an open meeting, you're willing to, you're able to stay, if you want to, it's up to you.
Councilor Donaldson, you're not supposed to say that. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
So, we've got the, the first one is Municipal Boundary Review and that's Alain and Chris, I do believe.
Yes, I think we're probably, because we have some maps set up, that we might actually move to that location.
Okay.
While we're moving, I'll invite you to open the 10-page attachment, the maps.
You can use that mic, CEO Muse.
Okay. Merci. So, approximately, well, more than three months ago, actually, we had, we had a couple of discussions around the, around the boundary review. I guess what we're, what we're looking to establish is where are we now? What is our current situation in terms of municipality, in terms of population? What are the trends? This is all, all of this work is due to the fact that in 2014, at the end of December 2014, we must submit to the Utilities and Review Board what our boundaries ought to look like for the 2016 election. That's mandated every eight years, if I did the math right. Anyway, so, the last time we did this work, some of you will have remember, would remember the work. It was actually started before I came here in 2006. And we had at that point decided that nine districts was, was the right amount of districts and there were certain lines that had been moved in order to, to ensure that the population still worked around the guidelines that the URB provides us. So, you have a package that has been attached last week and I guess I'll summarize it. I've made notes so that I'm summarizing instead of not summarizing. The population generally, we've seen from 2006 to now, is decreasing, which is what we've seen in a lot of rural communities in Nova Scotia, not just Nova Scotia and Canada. There is a global trend or at least a national trend that, of urbanization. So, we have seen a reduction and we continue. And we project that the population will continue to decline in this area. So, not knowing, not crystal balling the thing, what we have is the past. And what we did was, we took the past and, and predicted what, what it would be in the next survey, that the census survey that will occur in 2016. And that population is being projected at 7,864 and that would be down from 8,252. I would say six, but it's 52. So, the current elector situation is also enclosed in the documents. And what the elector situation is, is, as I mentioned, the nine polling districts, we are currently offside if we were to bring this information to the UARB and recommend no change. Not that I can predict what the UARB would decide, but the UARB generally decides favorably if you stay within voter parity, that every district has equal or close to the same amount of electors, thank you. And so, so that is a factor. And so, what they say is, well, we know you can't do that perfectly because you also have to consider community and culture and geography, there's other considerations. So, what they'd like to see is if you're plus or minus 10% of the average amount of electors, they're generally okay. They will allow higher than 10% variance, up to 25% in extraordinary circumstances. And we, we see that. We, we could potentially experience that in our municipality because of our, because of the way our geography works and because of the fact that we have both Francophone and Anglophone communities. And so, we have to respect communities and, and how they're formed. So, we looked at the electoral information now and what we see is that there's one district that actually exceeds the 25% threshold and there are four districts that exceed the 10% threshold. So, what we think is that if we presented no change, that that would likely not be acceptable to the UARB. So, regardless of what this council decides, change is coming. So, we either have to change the boundaries within the nine or consider whether nine is the appropriate number for our population. We did do some, we also did some comparisons with regions that are similarly sized and we tried to stay away from small towns because we're not a small town. But we looked at rural in this area, southwest Nova, and the average amount of counselors is seven. The average population per counselor is 1,175. So, we're, we're actually above the seven currently and we are, we, counselors represent less than the 1,175 per, per district. So, the actual number is 917. So, there are, certainly the conclusion we've come to is that, is that if, if change is acoming, but we just don't know what that looks like just yet, which will rely on council to give us more direction. So, we have challenges to that change. Whenever you change boundaries, you're talking about changing the way the community understands how council is, who represents them, et cetera. We have the challenge of making sure that each district has equitable or equal electors. We have the challenges of culture and communities of interest. And we also have the challenge of geography. So, so those are the, kind of the, the challenges that we're faced as staff and council to try to determine what, where to go from here. And Chris is actually going to highlight the, and the maps that we have produced. And I just want to say that the maps that we have produced are not the only way we get to different numbers, different districts, okay? This is an effort that was done initially by staff at your direction to provide an example of what nine would look like. Well, nine, I think you already know what it looks like. Seven, eight was considered unpractical to try to assess in terms of, it just was not going to work. Six and five districts and therefore counselors. So, we have established these maps and, you want me to hold it?
Can everyone see the map? So, as Alain said, I'm going to start with seven districts. I'm going to start with seven districts, just for the fact that Alain already mentioned that with nine districts, it would just be moving around some, some lines. So, with seven districts, the first things that we looked at was elector parity, the threshold of 10%. So, with seven districts, keep in mind that these are just proposed lines and district boundaries and they're not, it could change or things like that. But there was one district that had a voter parity of over 10%. But that could have, could easily be rectified because each neighboring district has a very low, close elector parity, so you could play with the lines there. So, with the communities of interest that were in there, when we looked at the boundaries and where we should put them, we did keep in mind some communities of interest, but the population was our most, I guess, principal rule that we were trying to follow. So, with seven districts, just to go over quickly, if we start with District 1 and 2, a portion of District 1 and 2 would be merged. As you can see, District 1 is, hard to see, but might be a bit over here. District 3 expands to the south of Black Pond Road and the east of Schmal du Grand Lac Road. District 4 expands to include Abrams River and Hubbard's Point. District 5 expands to include Kentville. District 6 expands to include Ilbrook. And District 7 expands into District 8 and District 9 expands into District 8. So, that gives you an idea of what seven districts. Alain?
So, I think we're okay.
So, so I think we're okay. Uh, it's, it's hard to absorb the information understandably, because it's a, it's a, it's a new map. I mean, probably you would want to look at this map in greater detail. But effectively, what has happened is, we've made a, a, a couple of assumptions when we went to seven. One was that the, the District six was primarily Anglophone, and, and was, was going to be very difficult to combine with another, uh, district, because it had a, a, a unique quality, and, and in, in many ways had, was, was surrounded by Francophone communities, primarily Francophone communities. So that's an assumption we made in this, in, in the development of this. Now then, so, so in other words, then, so if, if it could not be combined, then, uh, with, let's say, East Pumnico or West Pumnico or North, then it really only provide, and, uh, it really only allowed growth in the, in what used to be the East Pumnico District eight into, uh, sort of District seven, into District eight. So it was the only place, because both of these districts are, are actually lower in population. So we had to make them bigger in order to get more population in there, so that they could be within the population threshold. So, so there was, because we made that assumption, it really meant that only, this could only grow inside of, I guess, what we would call, uh, Pumnico Head and, and Upper, Upper West, I guess, Pumnico. I'm, I'm not sure exactly where the line is there. It is, it is lined up on a street. And then, so the rest of Pumnico, middle and lower, would, would remain fairly intact. So then it, it basically, that was, if you think about how it was before, this line would be split in nine. That, that line was lower, there was another district here, and then, and, and the line for East Pumnico was higher. Okay? That's a major change there. And on this side, the major change is, is, uh, is that, uh, Wetchport took on, and what I call Lower Wetchport, which is the Stan's District, uh, takes on more, comes up more north to pick up more population. But we had to draw a line, so we drew a line, and then, and then, uh, District one then kind of cuts into, to Little River, Comos Hill. So there, so it's, that's kind of a long and unusual district. Um, you know, it's, it's different. And so, so, and I think, you know, really, you know, I, I think that's all I really had to make, just repeating now what you're saying.
And it changes, uh, take that little peg thing. Yep. Oh, push it.
Push it. So again, we don't, we're not, those lines are subject to change. It's not, that's not the issue here. The issue is just to give you the information to start.
So, so at six districts, we had polling districts. We had three districts that were over the elector parity threshold of ten percent. And there was one district that was over the twenty percent elector parity threshold. So with six districts, we had a bit more difficulty making the population work. And a lot of those districts that have the, the high percentage of elector parity, it's hard to rectify them also, because their neighboring districts had high elector parities as well. So we tried to, as much as possible, keep the communities of interest with, uh, the six districts, and make the population as close as possible. So if we go through the districts, Districts seven and nine are expanding to District eight quite similarly to, to, with seven districts. So we had, as I explained, the same situation, um, with the boundary lines there. In this, with six districts, District six ex, uh, expands to include Ilbrook as well. Um, District five expands to include a portion of District one and District two. So that's different from the, from the, the scenario with seven districts. And District five no longer includes Belleville, Belleville South, and SAR. And District five expands to include Kentville. So District five has three major, or three changes, um, with the six district scenario. District four expands to include the Belleville, Belleville South, and SAR that District five, uh, let go, lack of better terms. And District three, ex, expanding to include virtually all of District two and District five that's left. So with District six, as we said, it was a bit more difficult to play with the, the numbers and the boundary lines, but that's, uh, what we came up with in the end. Is there anything else you want to add?
There are a lot of different ways that this can be divided. Um, so, uh, one thing, one, one, one thing we did say was, okay, because District five was taking on other components, and District four had to take on other components, we said that perhaps we should consider East Kent, because of the language is primarily Anglophone. How would that look like if it was with an Anglophone community? Now, we didn't like the fact that they're separated, um, but so was District one, has some separation between Kent, East Kent and, and, and District one as it exists today. So, uh, again, there, there are a lot of issues that we need to be debated here. The problem with six is that, is that, uh, the population is heavier over here and lighter over here. So in seven, what would happen is that the populations didn't quite work out to be, like, some of them were over the ten percent threshold, but they could easily be fixed, because the neighboring community was the other way. So we could move a boundary and, 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 and move electors from one boundary to another based on, on picking up different population. In this option, it's extremely challenging to do that, because the three biggest ones are over here, so you can't steal from the biggest ones. You wanna, you wanna be able to, if you wanna even out your population, you, you want your neighboring district to be low, so that you could take on that population. So that's, six is a pro, it, it was, it was a real challenge. I think if we looked at it completely differently, we might find that if the boundaries were different, it would, it might, the, the map might work better. But from a population parity perspective, it was not as smooth as seven or five. There, uh, yeah, oh, just a little bit of weakness there.
So, uh, as Alain mentioned, with five, five and seven were very, were easier to work with, with the population and the communities of interest. And you're gonna see with five districts, it's actually the one, the easiest to understand, but it's the one with the most, I would say, the most change. So if we start with the Pumnicos again, District eight and nine are merged together. District six and seven are merged together. District five expands to include Kentville and Abrams River. District four is merged with the remainder of District one and a portion of District two. And District three expands to include the other portion of District two. So in that, in this scenario, we have one district, like the seven district scenario, that's over the ten percent threshold, but it's easily rectified, again, because of the neighboring districts having such a close elector parity. Um, so, there is a lot of change in this one, because the population, because of such low number of councillors, the populations are so high, so the communities that are divided, let's say, such as Pumnico, are just simply put together. So the communities of interest do work very well here, and the elector parity does actually work well, too.
Um, so, so what it does is it keeps, in a lot of ways, the districts as we know them now, except erases the line in the middle. Now, that may sound from a mathematical perspective, and from a staff perspective, that may sound kind of easy, but that's not necessarily easy, because the communities have to be accepting of the fact that that line is no longer there. So they, you know, really, the communities of interest, uh, our communities will tell us what communities of interests are. And so, uh, you know, what we, we've done is, using the old nine, uh, we were, in a lot of ways, able to, to, I guess, merge two districts into one. So from, from, from that perspective, it was, it was smoother, but it certainly doesn't necessarily mean that it will be smoother. It is a drastic change from nine. And there, and so I think, uh, what we should say in respect to the previous council, they had been, they had looked at this as an option, and found it to be fairly, uh, uh, extreme in, in, in the change. So, um, so that should be noted as well.
And just, just before I finish, all the elector parity percentages are in the, the tables that were provided in the reference information package. I know I didn't talk about them here, but, um, just if you want to know more in detail what they were, uh, they're in there.
Okay. Uh, just to finish off, uh, there's, there's another small consideration that we've put in the, in, in, in this, and it's, uh, mayor versus war, uh, mayor versus warden. Many of you, I think, have, are familiar with the, the differences of mayor versus warden. A warden is, um, is elected first in the district that he or she is elected in. So Aldrick was in District eight, he's elected. And so as the warden, he's chosen by his peers to be the warden. A mayor is chosen at large. And so how that works is, basically, they run in the entire municipality, and, and, uh, everyone that lives in the municipality is entitled to vote for the mayor. So it would look similar to the town. So in somebody in District eight, could, or let's say District one, for simplicity, uh, would vote for their councillor in District one, and would also have the ability to vote for a mayor. Now, that option is probably more attractive, the lower your districts are, because what you're, you're basically doing is changing the way that your council works. If you've got five councillors, it makes more sense to consider mayor in that scenario, rather than a mayor in a seven, uh, scenario, only because you're actually adding another seat. So if you felt that five was too small, and you felt that, uh, six is a good number, but the logistics don't work, maybe you should consider whether it is a mayor system that you'd like to go to. Now, once you go mayor, you cannot go back to warden. So if you make that choice, it's over. You can't go back and forth. So we've been a mayor, a warden system for, for, forever. And I think at the time the M G A was, was established, and that this option was made available, the council at the time chose the warden system. And, uh, very few rurals actually choose the mayor system. I think there's five or less in Nova Scotia, rural municipalities that actually select a mayor. It is more of a town, uh, decision. I, it's less, I think there might've been a third, alright, that's why I said less than five, I wasn't sure if it was two or three. Okay. And they're larger municipal, rural municipalities, much larger than else. Um, so the recommendation that we're making is, is that, that council, when it's ready, uh, make a decision around where it wishes, how it wishes to proceed. From our perspective, um, uh, we require direction in order to further mine the information. Um, if, if you're, if you're looking at, if you have a, an idea that you wanna have a reduction, uh, what does that look like? Uh, what is the consensus or the, the motion that council will, will deliver? And at that point, we probably have to look at the options available under that, under that. Now, council may, may choose to go to the public to get information, to come back, uh, or you could ask staff to provide you with a recommendation, but it's ultimately your decision either way. So it, it's really in, in your court, and it's not something that needs to be decided today. But we're just trying to keep the ball rolling, because we know we have a deadline, twenty fourteen. And we know there's still a lot of work to be done, regardless of what council decides. And so that's, that's the end of the presentation, and I, and we have the maps here. We have provided you with the maps. Some of you may have had problems seeing it, they're big files. But I think, uh, I think most of, most of you were able to see it. So, um, are there any questions, comments around?
Counselor Donaldson.
I don't think we should consider any option that has an even number, because who's gonna break the tie votes? Are you even allowed to have an even number when you, uh?
You are. And in the case of a tie vote, first of all, the warden or the mayor always votes. Um, so it's not a tiebreaker like it used to be, but you would have the possibility, the distinct possibility, that you could have six, and you'd have a tie. And in the case of a tie, the motion would be defeated. So, so that's how you would have to arrange that, but yes, you're right. You could have multiple situations where you'd have a tie vote in an even-numbered scenario.
Just for that fact, I don't even think we should be considering even numbers. I won't say what number, but.
Counselor Thret.
Uh, from my perspective, I, I would like, if council could consider to, uh, to keep this, uh, uh, open for the rest of the summer. I've been doing some talking in my district and, and, uh, joining, and joining district, so some of the proposals, and I've been talking to people, and, uh, I've got a lot more that I wanna talk to. So I, I would prefer if we could hold this off till this fall, and if the council so chooses, it's up to you. Uh, you know, to give us time to di- digest this a little more, and from there.
Thank you. Counselor Donaldson.
I'd done likewise, I'd done a small survey. I asked twenty-seven people how many councillors there was on council, and not one person got it right. So the public isn't whole, uh, interested a whole lot, because they don't even know how many councillors there is.
I think probably a good idea.
Counselor LeBlanc.
I'll have to contradict what Counselor, uh, Donaldson has said. Most of my residents can tell me what I was wearing the six meetings ago.
But they can't tell you how many councillors there were.
Well, yeah, they can, yeah, no, they're, uh, they're quite engaged in my community. I guess, from what I'm hearing from our C E O, is that you're looking for a little bit of guidance. My question to the rest of you, I guess, is, are we gonna leave it upon ourselves, like Counselor Thret saying, to engage the community and kind of feel out what they feel? Or should we maybe have a small committee formed up of various members, staff, councillors, to kind of take it upon themselves to feel what the community wants? I'm throwing it out there, I don't necessarily have an opinion, just if we leave it up to ourselves, solely councillors what, what we propose, you know, you're not engaging as, as much of the community as you could if, uh, you had someone with an unbiased opinion. Just off food without, I guess.
Counselor Muse.
Yeah, I, I agree that the public has to be consulted, I think. One way or the other, public has to be consulted, whether it's as, as, in, in the sense that you just mentioned there. I know I've asked a few people as well, and you can get different answers, no matter, no matter who you ask. I mean, you can get some that, like, like, like Counselor Donaldson said, they don't even know how many councillors there are. I mean, you ask them, and they say, well, how many, how many are there now? And others say, there's too many, and then others just, no, they don't care. I mean, um, but I think it's very important that we, that we do consult, whether it's as public meetings in different districts, however we do it. But I think we have, before we do that, I think we have to have some kind of a plan ourselves of what, what we want to present to them, what, what we think we want to do as a council. Not just go out there with five or four different scenarios. Uh, I, I think, uh, we have to, to kind of look at it ourselves, and know what we think is going to work best, before we even go to the public. Now, mind you, I, I still believe that there's nothing wrong with asking around, and if a committee could be formed, how would you do that? Would you, would you have public meetings with the, with the committees? Or, or how would, how would you suggest that?
Counselor LeBlanc.
Um, I guess, just my opinion, but if, if you form a committee, I think you could, you could host the exact same meeting in every district. Present each option and show them all the pros and the cons. Like, uh, I, I won't lie, I pushed for it. Uh, I pushed for, uh, for shortening the amount of districts we had. And then one day, our C E O explained to me how much money we were saving. Let's, let's say you eliminate, we'll, we'll just put it in perspective, two councillors, and we go down to seven. The money, let's say you use it as a tax reduction, let's say, saving forty grand. Our C E O, I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, but it was a matter of cents, was it not?
Yeah, it was less than two cents.
Less than two cents.
If you were to apply it to, towards your residents on a residential rate.
So in my opinion, I was, you know, we gotta save money, we don't need this many councillors. And then when I was told, it would save each resident two cents. I believe two cents is worth, uh, strong representation, you know? So if the facts aren't out there, if the solid facts aren't presented to each community in the same way, you're getting, you're getting different opinions judged on different reasoning. So I think, my opinion, solely my opinion, you form a committee, you present each district the same spiel, basically, and then it's fair.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a minute here. Counselor Donaldson, you've been lifting your, your finger, but you haven't been touching.
Mine doesn't work.
Hey, it doesn't work?
Like, like Grand.
Okay, go ahead, Aldrick.
I, I agree, uh, with you two that we should, we have to go to the public. I mean, we, we have to. Uh, I, I wouldn't, as far as I'm concerned, suggest a committee. If we're gonna go to the public, we should go to the whole council, not, not just a committee. If we're gonna go to the public, we should go to the whole council, not, not just a committee, you know? And I think, you know, Danny said, I agree with that too, that you have to, you have to have something to present to the public. You just can't go with nothing. You have to have something, or, or a couple of options, or something, and, and the information, you know, which is very important, I think.
Okay, Counselor Donaldson. First on the public meetings, I don't know if they should necessarily be for the districts. I think they should be public meetings that anybody can come to, like at the high schools or, or wherever you put them, because we won't be dis- more than likely won't be discussing. Nine districts will be discussing the, of options of different districts. You're gonna have people from different districts looking at a new district that they may be in. And, uh, but in ways, I feel like we're putting the old saying, the cart before the horse. We haven't been asked to make any changes. We made changes from 11 to nine, and that was put together to represent our islands, peninsulas, community of interest. Nine worked well. Population has gone down s- a few percentage points. So we are, we all represent the same communities, the same communities of interest, with just a wee bit less population. The Republican Utilities Review Board has not asked us to make any changes. So, I mean, this is a good exercise, because there's, there is options available if they do ask us to make changes. But my position now, and will be until presentation time, is I like it the way it is, and I'm gonna, I'm, I'm strong for nine, until we're asked to make changes, and then I'll be willing to work with, with that. But until you're asked to do something, I don't know why we're doing it. That's my opinion.
Counselor Muse.
I, I, I think that the, uh, perspective of, of the public is that if we, i- i- it's a tax rate. It, it, you know, I, I think they see this as if, if we reduce, that it's a tax rate that's gonna go down, because we're saving $100,000 or whatever. That was a figure that was thrown to me when you were guys were looking at, at five, before I, before I was a councillor. And that's a figure that was thrown at me every time, well, we'll save $100,000 a year. But I think they have to realize what it's going to do as far, I mean, we, we're gonna save, but what, what is that gonna do individually or to each household? And I think this is what they're, 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 they're looking at. That if we can reduce, then my tax rates won't be as high. And, and I think they have to be, to be, it has to be explained to these people that that is probably not going to be the case. You know, I mean, the savings is not gonna be, gonna be significant enough. And I think they, they have to realize that, that, that what is involved in, in council, the committees that we have to attend, that if you start reducing, you have more committees to attend. Uh, are we gonna have enough, enough time to devote to, to what we're elected to do as well? So I, I, I think it's something that has to be explained to the public as well.
Right, uh, Counselor Thret.
Probably just on a final note, I think what Counselor Donaldson said about maybe having not, not a, a meeting in each district. But I kind of like that idea of going to maybe two of the schools, three of the schools, meet, meet with the, whether it be, I would prefer all of council to be there. And meet and, and talk to the people, invite, make sure people know about the meeting. Invite them to come in, show them a few scenarios, like Counselor Muse said. Show them, you know, what is this, is there a saving? And how much, you know, how much time you, where you need to devote to this, to, to be a councillor? You know, do you need to stop your full-time job just to be a councillor? Maybe your wages would have to go up? You know, that, you know, that, what savings are you doing there? So I think there's a lot of stuff that we have to be prepared before we have these meetings. And I, and I think, uh, maybe in by the summer, looking at this this fall, would be a good idea. But that, again, that's my opinion.
I think on that note, we've had some good discussion here tonight. But again, uh, we're looking at 2014, where the summer, we're not gonna have any, uh, public meetings in the summer, I don't believe, uh, on this, because we'll have nobody there. So I, I think at this time, I don't see anybody else's light on. I think we'll probably, uh, just, uh, you know, end the discussion, and, uh, come September, uh, we'll reengage and talk about it. You have something else?
It just, I just want to be clear, um, what council's asking. I think, I think the, the delay into fall makes a lot of sense, because we have these maps here. I think it'll give councils to ti- the time to determine which ones really are not on the table for discussion. I think that's really what we need to get to. The more that we can look at this, the more we can eliminate options that just don't make sense for whatever reason. The, the least options you present to your, your public, the easier it will be to understand. Because it is extr- it is, I mean, and I'm, and this is no offense to the public, you guys are in this all the time, and it's can be a little wow, right? So it is, it is, certainly we want to keep the, the options as, as simple as possible. And I agree, we want to get all the facts on the table. So from our perspective as staff, what we'll do is look at the fall. We'll look at how we want to engage the, uh, how we'd like to engage the, the public. Um, what I've heard is that all of council wishes to be involved. What I've also heard is that it's not necessarily nine districts. It's probably maybe three or four regions that you would want to have these types of meetings in, in the fall. Uh, is there anything else I'm missing there?
Well, I, I think, uh, we, we looked at the uneven numbers, the, the nine, the seven, and the five, uh, six was kind of out of the picture, so.
Six was problematic even from the, even from our perspective as, as staff. I, I, we felt that six was really going to cause a lot of problems, because it didn't achieve anything other than move the number from nine to six.
Yeah, and maybe that's one that we can eliminate, and, uh, but, uh.
And that's certainly up to council. We would, I could, we could quickly, um, uh, focus on, uh, smaller options if council wishes.
Counselor Thret, you had something?
Yeah, just something to add on to our CEO, or to, to all of council here. Do you think, and maybe I'm way out of the ballpark on this one, but I'll throw it out to you guys, uh, do you think we should have a, a special meeting? I mean, the public can be invited to come here, you know, but in council and say, let's hash it out before we go, we go any further. Like have a meeting in September just over this, like, uh, you know, six o'clock meeting? And just have a look at all ourselves, we're looking at this, no, this is no, no, this, yes, this looks good. And just on this, spend an hour, an hour and a half on this? Then at least we know where we, once we go to the public, we're all on board. We're not there at a meeting the first day, well, I don't like this, and I don't like that. I mean, it's up to you guys, just.
So I guess we're looking at a meeting where a council can sit down.
Yes.
And discuss the issues and, and agree, uh, on the few, uh, I say few, uh, the few scenarios, uh, so that we can go to the public with.
And, and I, I would see that meeting as being a far more practical meeting, where you'd have the maps and like in.
That's right.
Kind of do a walk around and ask questions around what that might look like.
Yeah.
And, uh, of course, if council has questions outside the meeting, you know, you know how to get ahold of me.
Yeah.
And we'll, uh, we'll, we'll give you as much information as you feel like you need.
Okay, that give you some guidance?
I, I feel like it does. I, what I hear is public input, uh, in the fall, special meeting of council only for this. And, uh, and, uh, also, we will provide, uh, provide you with, uh, with options of, of, on public engagement. I know that it has been done in other communities before, it's not the first time we've done this. And I, I do want to clarify, we, we must do this process by 2014. But there is nothing in the process that says we have to reduce or increase. There's nothing, it's as, as Counselor Donaldson said, there's nobody that's saying you must reduce your council number. What they're saying is, you must analyze your council and determine what the right number is.
Yeah.
And we'll agree or disagree with your assessment. But what the UARB is, is concerned with is, did you engage the public?
Yes.
Did the public know what was coming? What did you do? How did you engage the public? And so not only is that something you want to do, it's something you have to do.
Yeah.
When, when you're saying, when you're saying.
2014, is there a month, is there?
December.
It's December?
Yeah, we have to submit by December 2014.
Okay.
We do have time.
All right. So I think, uh, our CM Muse is clear on that, and I think council's clear. So we'll move on to.
Thank you.
Five B, which is the noise bylaw first reading.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, the, this was added as a fairly late item. Um, council has the choice to either accept first reading today or, or not. The noise bylaw, uh, was the number one bylaw that the Subcommittee wished to have changed. Uh, recall, if you recall, we had a Subcommittee created to kind of prioritize bylaws and see which ones need to be updated. And the noise bylaw was, was one that needed to be updated. And so of course, we used, um, a lot of the templated, uh, noise bylaws. We also looked at other regions and what they were doing. Uh, we quickly eliminated any sort of, um, um, test for sound. Uh, there are, um, there are some bylaws that, that you actually, that actually state you cannot make a sound louder than 70 decibels. But we have absolutely no way to actually capture or measure that. So for the rurals around Nova Scotia, that's a bylaw that's almost never captured. Uh, it's usually identifies prohibited activities and tries to identify when, when they are prohibited. Okay, so really, the key is here is, uh, to try to balance, um, you know, the, the, the proper, uh, you know, li- living in the community, um, with, with the noise that, that could be made generally. So there are, under Part One, which is in the back of the, the bylaw, there's activities that are prohibited at all times. So, um, uh, and so the list is, is, is there. Uh, operation of a combustion engine or pneumatic device without an effective exhaust. Uh, operation of a vehicle with trailer resulting in banging, clanking, squealing. So there's, the example goes on and on. Um, I think it's very important that council review these carefully and understand what that might mean in your own communities. That's why I'm saying, you may not be prepared to make your first, uh, to, to, to the first reading, uh, motion today. If you are prepared to do the first reading, understand that the public hearing process would begin, and you'd have a public hearing process, and you'd have a second reading, and a second opportunity to read, to, 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 uh, review and, and ultimately approve the bylaw. Uh, there are other, uh, activities that are, that are prohibited at certain periods of time. So, um, that's to kind of consider the general operation of business. And so certain things are generally considered to be okay, uh, in normal working hours, but not okay at 11 o'clock at night. So that's also listed in the bylaw for your consideration. Uh, the old bylaw, um, was dated and, and did not have the detail that this one has.
Okay. Anything else, CM Muse?
Um, I can say that the, the process of getting this bylaw to you, it went to the bylaw committee, uh, and the changes, all of the changes that they had recommended were implemented. We did actually get, uh, some input, uh, from a community, a concerned community member. And we pulled some of those recommendations in as well. And, um, so that's the process. And of course, they received, the bylaw committee received this information, um, from staff, and that was not developed from scratch, it was developed from model bylaws.
So if this goes, uh, passes first reading tonight, uh, what type of timeframe are we looking at? Is it, after first reading, do you have to have a, a certain amount of time before you have your next meeting, or, or a minimum amount of time, or?
The advertising has to be done, excuse me, I apologize. Uh, the, the advertising has to be done, um, twice, um, uh, basically before the next meeting. Uh, so because we're having a delay in the next meeting, that should easily be accomplished. So as long as the ad post, is posted twice, uh, in, in the paper, and, um, uh, and, and clearly denotes the day that it will be, um, heard. Generally, what we do is we advertise it closer to the date of the meeting to make sure. But, uh, uh, we require, uh, 14, 14 days, uh, of, uh, prior to the meeting for advertising. So that's generally two, two Tuesdays that's printed.
So in this case, yeah, we have all summer, so.
So it would likely be the fall before we see a second reading here.
Yeah.
So if you're not inclined to make a decision today, it probably won't delay the process that much, because you could pick it up the first meeting in September, or even a meeting in the summer that we'll have, possibly, to do that motion at that time.
Okay.
So there isn't a huge rush, but we wanted to bring it to this meeting, because we said we would.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Counselor Thret.
I'd like to move that, uh, we accept the, uh, first reading of the noise bylaw.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
So first reading, uh, doesn't mean that there won't be changes to this version. Uh, it does give you the option to make changes in the second reading.
Yeah.
Minor changes in the second reading.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to, uh, number six, which is, uh, financial report. Again, uh, CM Muse.
Seeing as this is very preliminary, um, I, I really don't have, I'm not gonna spend any, uh, time unless there are questions around the financials. As it's very preliminary, uh, any idea that we're gonna have a surplus or, or not is really very premature. But, uh, we like to provide the information. Uh, there are no trends here to my, at this point, that I'm concerned about. Uh, pleasantly, pleasantly, uh, looking at the deed transfer packs is ahead of schedule, and it continues that trend, um, into the, into the new month. So, uh, that's a good, good news, that's good news. Um, we are, there's, I don't have any concerns at this point in time, uh, in this early stage. So unless there are questions.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the financial report.
Okay, moved by Counselor Book, seconded by Counselor Muse. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. I will move on to number seven, other business, uh, for discussion, uh, for decision and discussion. First one, seven A, Western Counties Regional Library Funding. Okay? I guess they want a confirmation that the funding, uh, will stay the same for this year, is that correct? CM Muse?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, and the budget that you passed, uh, assumed the same funding as last year.
Okay.
So they're not asking for money that you weren't anticipating in the budget. Um, they're basically asking permission to maintain it, if that's the rule of council.
And I, I guess the reason they're asking is because usually we fund them by population?
Correct, and because there are.
A little, okay. Okay, so it's been moved by Warden Dontrama, seconded by Counselor Book. Any more discussion? Uh, question, all those in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. Move on to next one, which is Appointment of Geotourism Stewardship Council. That one's mine. Okay, so I've been asked, uh, the, just to kind of give you, the Geotourism Steward Council, uh, I guess, uh, they would like, uh, I guess, Bonton, uh, our, our tourism, uh, organization, is asking council to appoint, uh, a councillor and, uh, another member, uh, for the Geotourism Stewardship Council. Bonton is asking all participating municipalities for two persons to serve on the Geotourism Stewardship Council. They believe it to be, uh, reasonable that one of these two individuals be a councillor, as municipal funds will be spent on the project. And the Stewardship Council is the body that will negotiate any final contracts with National Geographic. Uh, at this time, the municipality of Napolis has already elected a, uh, or appointed a, uh, a municipal councillor, okay? Uh, in addition, as the, uh, geotourism project involves infrastructure and economic development goals, and not only tourism, we believe that a councillor can best represent his or her overall region. Okay? Uh, I guess I've been asked, uh, to sit on that council. Uh, I guess it's, it'll be up to you guys, uh, to decide if, uh, you want me there or, or whatever, okay? So we're looking for a councillor, and also looking for two members. Uh, and we've, we've got a name, uh, who, Brenda LaGrandeur, who actually sits, uh, works for us here at the municipality, and also is, uh, part of the Bonton, uh, tourism, uh, organization, who would serve as the other person if council, uh, so chooses, right?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we appoint, uh, Deputy Warden, uh, Dontrama to, to, uh, to the Geotourism Stewardship Council, and, uh, Brenda LaGrandeur as our citizen rep.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. All right, move on to seven C. This one's interesting, it's Elephant Grass and Willow Copie Bio Mass Study. Which one of you is gonna take this one? Alan or Chris?
Flip a coin? Well, I'll I'll be brief, huh? The, there's a lot of information attached, but I will just start by saying that the request is for a study to see if the mink waste could be utilized as a, I guess, a fertilizer for both elephant grass and willow coppice biomass study. Now, elephant grass is, as it suggests, very big grass. Elephant size, I'm not sure. But apparently it grows fairly fairly high, and it's quite thin. And and what they like about it is that you can cut it, and then the next year it grows back. So it's not like cutting a tree where it takes a while to come back. It's 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 an annual kind of, now it doesn't, obviously burns differently than trees. I and and if we start getting too technical, I'm you're gonna, I'm gonna be lost. So but basically, what they'd like to see is is whether they could actually harvest this kind of grass in the region. They haven't stated exactly where, but that but really, the first piece is the study. So, I mean, we did a little research, Chris and myself, mostly Chris, and we asked the the proponent, the the person asking, to provide us information. And and you have that in hand. And so certainly, we didn't see any reason why you wouldn't recommend the study. You're not, you're not actually approving a development or doing any of that at this time. I believe the request was a letter of support or
In principle, yeah.
In principle, to to support the the study.
Councillor Donaldson.
Suggested motion that council support in principle the proposed project to explore the potential use of mink waste as a nutrient for energy crop, elephant grass, and willow coppice. That's my motion.
That's the motion. Motion's on the floor. Anybody second there? Seconded by councillor Albright. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. All right, move on to seven D, operating reserve and capital budget approval. Again, that's you, Alan.
Very quickly, the operating reserve is 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 really just a function of indicating what interest will be earned in the operating reserve and what we are actually anticipated as a transfer going into the operating fund. You've already approved the transfer coming from the reserve when you did the approval for the operating budget. Really, what you see here, and I recognizing that it says a little negative at the end of one hundred and twenty-six nine, we've traditionally budgeted transfers from the reserves to the operating fund because we've always underestimated certain, especially deed transfer. But we kind of estimate the worst-case scenario in in case of, because we we know what's coming or what could potentially come. So we're generally conservative in our estimates. So what we do is we show the transfer coming from the reserves is higher, generally. That's been our history. So we have not always gone and and made that transfer. In fact, if you look at the last two years, we've budgeted transfers and 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 the actual transfer is zero. So so in the last two years, we had a net net increase of one hundred and eighteen thousand and two hundred and twenty-six thousand in the past two years. But this year, we're reflecting a decrease because we're going to use some of those reserves for special projects, tennis courts, renovations being one of the major ones. So that's really the summary of the operating reserve. I would I would recommend approval the way that it's stated. The the second document's a little bit more difficult to read because the the way that I'm showing the revenue and expenses is 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 not by project, but but where it's coming from. So what you'll see is the total revenues we're anticipating for capital reserve is one point two-two-three million dollars. Most of that is, excuse me, most of that is anticipation for two major projects. One is the Dennis Point Extension that we've already received a COA, the word from a COA that there'll be fifty percent funding on. So the rest of that funding will come from the gas tax and the users. And so the agreement was one-third users with the remainder coming from gas tax. At this point, we're estimated the total cost at eight hundred thousand dollars, but it could be less than that. Depend, we're really very preliminary in that. If you recall, when we did the ask for a COA, we asked for fifty percent at five hundred and fifty thousand, which represented a one point one million dollar project. We know it's not going to be that high because we actually selected a lower-cost option from the get-go. So we'll be meeting with the community in the very near future to talk about the details around that. The other is the is the dewatering project. We've actually completed that project at this time. So this budget includes the rest of the expenses. We had budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand, and so the rest of it is being reflected in the current in the current year and is budgeted. That was paid one hundred percent by gas tax and will be reimbursed by the users because we've significantly reduced their operating costs by putting in that technology. And we're still dealing with a bit of a smell issue that we hope to resolve soon. For those of you who know West Pumnico that are that are watching, or the councillors that are perhaps watching me, that we are recognizing that there is currently an odor issue, and we we are working very hard to resolve it. So the other smaller projects, I say smaller, but Tuscat wastewater treatment plant upgrade, what we've assumed at this point in the budget is that half of that money will come from PCAP, which is a provincial capital investment program. We've made application. We have not received approval yet. If we do not receive approval, the gas tax will cover the other half. The total cost is expected to be forty-four thousand dollars. So optimistic, we get the twenty-two thousand. The other smaller projects, we will be completing the Wedgeport sewer study. We are planning the third week of July as a community meeting. We haven't established a date yet, but we've basically pushed the deadline off to the engineers, and they said they would respect that. So that will be mostly, if not completely, done at that period of time, certainly good enough to bring to the community for their input. And then we have some software-related costs that we have to invest in in terms of development. We have some some of our development and land use systems are older than the abacus. So we may have to upgrade the way that we do business, which will actually improve customer service in terms of tracking information. We'd need to better track land use and other development permits that are happening in our community. So that is one point zero-five-five. You'll see excess income over expenses of one sixty-seven. So there we are anticipating that the capital reserve will increase despite the fact that we have projects. And that's due to the fact that we do transfer an amount every year from the operating fund, we rate it, from the operating fund into the capital reserve in anticipation of future capital projects. Now, for those of you that were here prior, that started when we did a municipal building assessment back in nineteen ninety-nine, and that there was a an agreement to put so much aside for ten years. So that has passed, and now we're continuing to put money aside. But it is not necessarily earmarked for that purpose. It would be earmarked for a capital purpose for certain. So that's the capital budget. I do want to point out one other thing that's not really reflected in the numbers, and it really has to do with a a deadline that we must respect as council. The gas tax agreement has been, will, is now permanent. So the the gas tax agreement, the way that it worked prior, is we had two gas tax agreement prior prior to now. The next one, the one that we're in now, expires in twenty-fourteen. And it's a, it was a non-permanent funding. Now it's permanent. But because it's changed, we have to deal with the money we haven't spent. And there is money we haven't spent. And I'm anticipating that unless something changes, that we may still have money that we haven't spent. So I will be presenting to council at the next meeting what our options might be in terms of how we deal with that money. We have two projects in particular that, one that might attract gas tax, and the other that would absolutely attract gas tax on our capital investment plan, which is our five-year capital plan. That, we've done a lot of the work that we said that we were going to do. And there are two projects that are, two of the three projects that are listed could attract gas tax. One is the municipal building. Should we should we decide that the building would be constructed new and would have a Green Globe certification, it would attract gas tax funding. The other is the Wedgeport sewer project, which would absolutely attract gas tax. It's made for that. But that project would be dependent on other sources of funding that we cannot predict would come in before our deadline. So our deadline is March thirty-first, twenty-fourteen.
Has to be spent.
Correct, unless we unless we ask to have it extended, which we will. And we'll have it extended to March thirty-first, twenty-fifteen. If it doesn't get spent, it gets sent back. That's not an option.
No.
So we do have other projects that I think we need to work on in order to update our capital investment plan. There are other projects that could find themselves on the plan that would attract gas tax. But again, we have a timeframe that we have to spend it on. So we have to understand that we don't just ask for an extension. And and that's okay. If we ask for an extension, we say, and it will be spent by this, and it will be spent on this. So it's not just saying, oh, yeah, we'll spend it. We have to be specific. Okay? So so that will be work for you for a future time. But I, it's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, my calculations. So a very good project in the waiting.
Yeah.
That that could benefit from that.
Something that you mentioned earlier, just want some clarification. Just for clarification, I think when you mentioned the Dennis Point sewer extension, the government told us they would pay five hundred and fifty, or half, fifty percent. They will pay fifty percent of the project, right?
Correct.
So if the project is less, they'll pay, they'll still pay fifty percent of the project.
Unless we can convince them that their percentage is wrong.
Yeah, yeah. So in other words, I mean, they told us five, half of the one point one million.
Yeah.
But if it's eight hundred thousand, they're going to give us four hundred.
Correct. That, again, and I say it a little bit with a smile, but but if they if they had money left on the table, and then and they felt that the project was that strong, they may actually change the the way the agreement is worded. I can't, obviously, that's not something that I can, but that it's it, I would certainly ask.
Yeah.
Right? But that it's meant to be fifty percent to a maximum of five hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
So that's the capital reserve with a little sidebar on the gas tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on the capital reserves? All right. So we'll move on to the next one.
Do you need a second?
We do.
Oh, great.
I'll make a motion to approve the operating reserve and capital budget.
Right, moved by councillor Book, seconded by councillor Thret. Any more discussion? I haven't heard a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried. Move on to seven E, which is the Royal Canadian Legion's support. I guess this was sent to us by the Royal Canadian Legion, and they're concerned about the veterans, I guess, the veterans' place in Yarmouth. And the federal government is turning over the responsibility, these places, to the provincial government. We have sent letters out to different federal politicians with our concerns that the veterans' place will remain open as long as we have veterans to fill beds. They have left us with no doubt, not to worry. The problem is, we are unable to get a firm answer from our provincial government and who will be in power, I guess. So they're just asking us for support for for this endeavor. But I think Warden Donthermo, you went to a meeting the other day and got some different information?
Well, it's not much different. And I hadn't read all this, but what they they have received the same information, right? Not to worry, we have less, they have lessed us, no doubt, not to worry. So they've been told also that it's going to remain open. But I guess they just want some, a letter of support. I've been told that, no, that the the Veterans Place is not going to close.
Okay. So are, at this time, are we going to, they request us to write letters to the three leaders, asking where they stand on the issue. We hope that the, I guess, we hope they give us a firm answer without beating around the bush, okay? We would much appreciate if you can help us get a firm answer in writing and sign. So I guess at this point, are we helping out?
Would you suggest a letter should should read?
Well, if you think that there that it's not going to close, then then maybe you just write a letter of support in a positive manner. We're confident it won't close, and, you know, we support the fact that it's that that's going to remain open, if if that if that is in fact the case. So if you don't write the letter, of course, that it could be, you know, the Legion might might misconstrue, they might not understand that you're actually saying everything's okay, it doesn't need a letter. Well, they're asking for a letter anyway, so.
Well, let's, yeah, let's write a letter, but I'm not sure what, what the letter should read.
Yeah. Councillor LeBlanc.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're getting, no doubt not to worry, from the federal government. But it seems they're not getting any answers from the provincial government. They want us to write, and as they're saying, who will be in power. So they're asking us to write the letter to all three political party leaders. So by the sounds of it, there is no guarantee from the provincial government. So I'd like to see.
Okay.
That's how I got it. I'd like to see a letter sent. Yeah, I'll make it a motion that we that we send a letter to all three political party leaders of our provincial government.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded by, moved by councillor LeBlanc, seconded by councillor Muse. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Seven F, EMO Advisory Committee Member Appointment. Okay, I think this was brought by?
It's the request of the EMO Subcommittee. I think they've already consulted with Guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I've accepted. And I, I suggested, when when we talked about it at the advisory committee, I I suggested that it would be brought to council and and appoint you formally, you know.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we appoint Guy Thret, councillor Thret, as a another another member of the committee. And and the reason is that if if one of us can't make it, then we still have at least two.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. All right, seven G, Eelbrook Fire Department Committee. There, finally got to it.
Keep you through all this punishment, actually.
Okay, C. Amus, you got some info on that?
So a preliminary meeting was requested with myself. Present was District Fire Chief Malcolm Madden for the Eelbrook Fire, and Ray Thret met with me to discuss on last Monday to discuss the state, status of their plans to construct a new fire hall. There, as you may or may not be aware, the Eelbrook Fire Department has been for quite a long time contemplating a new hall. Their old hall is dated. I mean, it, they they can no longer have meetings in that location due to a variety of reasons. I mean, it's still housing the the trucks, but it's it's causing some issues. They had, they have purchased a piece of property where I would consider, you know, just about between, almost at Abrams River, still in SAR, on Highway Three, near the, well, on on Highway Three. It's it's a fairly obvious area as you pass by because it's been cleared for the most part. And so it's a fairly large lot of land that they've purchased there, but and they have done some some work regarding what design might work for Eelbrook. I know that Italy Cross, the construction Italy Cross was mentioned a number of times as as an option. And I think at this point, they're looking to get the municipality of Argyle more engaged in that project. The Eelbrook Fire Department construction is is on your capital investment plan that was approved in September of last year. It does not attract gas tax as a standalone fire department. It would not attract gas tax. So I I didn't ignore that project when I was talking about gas tax. It wouldn't qualify. So the question we asked ourselves, I guess, and we didn't really have an answer, but thought it was worthwhile asking a a larger group, is, you know, we have been speaking about the new fire hall in Eelbrook, and we've been speaking about potential municipal building. And so does it make sense to start talking about them together? And I think in my report, I say something along the lines of, you know, we owe it to our taxpayers to at least understand the answer to that question. And certainly was not the
And certainly was not, the request for decision was not designed to have all of council talk about that tonight, but that it would encourage council to appoint one, two, three councillors to a subcommittee that would work together with the volunteers of the Eelbrook Fire Department to establish the possible in that area and what it might look like. It is not a new idea, it's been done before. And so what will it look like? Where would it look like? How would it work? What are our options? So there's a lot of questions that we'd have to iron out, and I think is probably the work of, of both parties along with staff support. Because it's on the capital investment plan, I would recommend that we do that, because otherwise, I think we, I think, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for the council to work closer with the volunteer department. And I did suggest that perhaps the, the two members that might be interested or, or largely impacted would be councillors Muse and Albright, as located primarily in those two, although I, it is also, Eelbrook also represents, or it covers a portion of District Six, District, Richard Donaldson's district, I believe. Not sure if the lines match exactly. So, so anyway, so that, that was the recommendation that I think we, we collectively came to, and I believe the Eelbrook Fire Department, who's represented here today, had their meeting yesterday, and so I'm sure they'd have something to say about that meeting, and that, the recommendation from our, our point of view would be to, to get together and, and analyze the question. So that's, that's what came out of that meeting.
Councillor Surat?
A few questions I've got on this. First of all, when we're talking about a fire department, you know, certainly Eelbrook is in dire need of a, of a fire department, I have no questions on that. I've talked to many of the members over the, the years, councillor, former councillor Madden, the fire chief now, discussed things, and there's, there's no doubt in my mind. I guess when you talk about joining an administration building to it, it certainly does raise the question to myself of, you know, where are we going with this? You know, this is not only for the residents of that fire district, that would certainly engage people from all our districts. Because certainly when you talk about a fire department, I don't see, you know, very many people, you know, not, not, not want the fire department to be in a, in a proper place, in a proper, in a newer building from, since they've been there for a long time, but when you start talking about an administration building, you know, we're talking about the whole municipality, you know, almost money, you know? I, I guess as long as we're, that I'm clear that this committee does not go there a, a, and say we're building a building and blah, 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 and we haven't, and, you know, it's only the people from Eelbrook, and it's not engaged in the whole, in the whole municipality. That is one of my questions. Question two would be, what about, I've, I've talked to a few members of the Eelbrook Fire Department, and one question that was brought up to me, and this has been probably over the last two or three months, was what about joining, and that, this could be a possible scenario, if we're talking fire department only, what about having Surat's Island or Alhansen District, Mirsoville, Hoppers Point, Quinnen, and Eelbrook together as one department, maybe in Tuskegee or in their present site, that they've got up in, in, in Eelbrook, that they've cleared the land? That would be a question that I've had from some firemen in that district, which I, you know, while we're at that discussion, maybe that could be brought in the discussion, maybe it wouldn't go anywhere, you know? Because I know the fire departments, and I can speak for my, down in our district, the volunteers are few and far apart, very few and far apart. And I guess the other question I'm sure you'd be discussing, if there was a building to be built, and there was an administration building, would that be Tuskegee, Quinnen, Eelbrook, whatever, and that would be on the thing? Maybe you could have, would the public engaged in, in, if we're talking administration?
So, so the first question was, we're talking about engagement with the fire department, but if we're talking municipal building, we have to engage the whole of the community, and I certainly don't disagree with that, and I don't think that's the intent of the committee. I think the committee, at least at first blush, when we, when we talked about it, would be, certainly would, would, would analyze the question, right? I mean, I think there'd be a lot more work after that committee was done in order to determine how would it, how would the costs be allocated? Because there's a portion of which that would be solely for the district, and then there would be another portion that would be for the whole of the community. So does the combination of the two buildings actually attract gas tax eligibility for a fire department because it's attached, right? So that's another question that we really don't, like, there's a lot of questions that we don't have answered, and I think that, that the whole point around the ad hoc is to kind of iron out a lot of the questions that you and other people would be asking. The recommendation that comes out, I don't know that the, I don't know that the ad hoc committee comes up with a recommendation, it probably should, but at the end of the day, it will at least have analyzed the pros and cons of each option. And so it may not be in the position where it, it says, oh, we recommend this for sure. It could, you know, they may recommend that here's what it looks like, you may want to go broader than this in order to actually come up with a solution. The merging of the fire departments, we didn't, certainly didn't discuss that at our meeting. I think that's, might be a topic of discussion at the fire committee level, that's probably a more appropriate area to, to look at that. I, I don't know that that would be the mandate of this group, but, but I respect the question because if you had, if you had a solid answer, or if you understood what that looked like, that might actually change what the ad hoc committee would, would consider. So it might be a question that the ad hoc committee doesn't have an answer to, but I don't know that that, I think it would be beyond their mandate. And the third piece was?
That the building would be in Eelbrook, would it be in Tuskegee, would it be in, in Quinnen, would it be, whatever that?
Yeah.
That would be a question, probably the ad hoc committee certainly look at, I'm sure.
I think that would be part of the mandate of the committee to at least understand where it could be located. There might be perfectly good reasons why a fire department cannot be located in Tuskegee, let's say, and then, and the opposite may also be true, perfectly good reasons why the municipal building cannot be located on the land that they've purchased. So, so we, again, we haven't analyzed the question, I think we owe it, we owe the analysis, but that, I think, would fall in, in the, the terms of reference of that group.
I, I certainly hope that the committee can get together and work with these people. It's a great idea.
Councillor Muse?
So, so the, the committee, the fire, the fire department committee is the building committee, that's what they're talking about? Is, is that who's here tonight, the building committee? It's not the building committee. But when you said they met yesterday, they met as a fire department, like, do you have a committee formed, like, what, what, that, that we would join, do you already have a committee's forum for that?
We just met last night, I just wanted to let the committee members know that this, there was going to be a discussion here tonight.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, yeah.
As a formal committee, building committee, there, there has been some, as far as going to this, this group, though. Nothing has been decided, you know, at all.
Right.
Who would be the audience.
Okay. So the fire department hasn't, doesn't have that either, like, that, that we've joined, it would be something that we would?
There was a building committee with, with Asfire Team.
Yes.
We have to revisit that. But I wanted to start them all rolling by meeting with the CEO.
Okay, yeah. Well, I, I definitely would be interested in serving on that committee, for sure, if, if, if that's the, it does serve our area. I think we, we have an interest in that, it definitely serves our area, so.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
So we, we're hearing that councillor Muse and councillor Albright are interested in being part of this adcock, ad hoc, sorry, municipal fire building committee, okay? Are we engaging staff, councillor, CEO Muse?
Yes, I mean, you can leave that to my discretion, but I think the staff members that I would ask to participate would be John Sullivan, Chris Rotten, and myself, and Marcia Deon, Director of Finance, as needed.
Okay.
So it would be two of three typically would attend each week.
All right. And as far as the, the Eelbrook Fire Department, I guess they'll have to choose their own members? And how many are we suggesting, I guess, just so we kind of get an idea? Usually an, an ad hoc is, is not a, a big committee, but we've already have two councillors, and we have staff who will be, I guess, in the supporting role, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So any sort of research this group wishes to, to have done, understand that creating this committee will take staff resources in order to, to, to move this project.
Should the, should the fire department have had a meeting with minutes that say that this will move ahead, where you've only had a couple of people meeting with the CEO, should you have a motion, and that from your fire department? I'm just saying that to cover your, your butt. Should you have something like that, maybe on paper? Said I move, seconded by your fire department, and I don't know if that's a legal thing, or maybe, maybe I'm wrong there.
It's probably up to them.
It, it's up to, it's up to the committee, but I think, I think it's a good suggestion because you don't want for later on, somebody to say, what the heck? So you'd want to bring that to a meeting, of course, but it doesn't have to be done before we appoint our members. So we can appoint the members today, you can choose two or three, and, and then bring that to the committee, and then they can, they can choose. I think it should be even numbered. You know, the reason being is, is if there's an impasse, if there's a disagreement, I don't know that, this is an ad hoc committee. So, so if there's a disagreement, then that will be reflected in the report, and the report will come to council and to the rest of the Eelbrook Department. So I don't think it has to be an odd-numbered committee, from my perspective, but that's entirely up to you.
All right. So we have a couple of names on the floor, somebody else interested, councillor Donaldson is, does impact your district a little bit, but that'll be up to you.
I'm not going to serve.
Okay, all right. Anybody care to, to move the two members?
Yes, I'd like to move that we, we make an ad hoc committee for a municipal fire building with the Eelbrook Fire Department, and that we appoint then Muse and you call Albright as voting members of the committee in law with the three staff, the CEO, Chris, and John Sullivan as voting members of the committee.
Are they, are you guys going to be voting members, or just support?
I would recommend support.
Support, then you use and you call Albright as voting members, sorry.
Okay, all right, heard the motion. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. So I guess Eelbrook Fire Department, now you guys have to appoint somebody, and I guess somebody you, probably Anna will be the, the contact, and we can get that rolling, so.
We'll draft up a terms of reference to give us a starting point, so that everybody understands what this committee is intended to do, that's, and then we can agree, after it's drafted, we can agree if it's right or wrong, and then we'll move forward.
Okay. Here we go. We'll move to number eight, correspondence and for information, waste check, enforcement officer report. You've been circulated with the report, nothing really other than information, if anybody Hearing no questions, we'll move on to eight B, Societe Touristique Bon Ton d'Argyle. It's a one pager, this is a, a thank you for the, I guess, for the financial support that we've, through the Festival des Ciel Noirs in October, so it's the Dark Sky Festival, which is in October, so they're congratulating or thanking us for their, their support. And we'll move on to nine, which is the financial request, district community grant. The first one is the Village Historique Acadienne de Nouvelle des Coûts, and that's one that I brought, it's a district community grant, and it's for the, the passport, which is the, the passport de l'Acadie, which is kind of like through Musée Acadien, Village, Grand Prairie, Rendez-vous d'Abay, and another one, I think it's probably Port Royal or Nathalie Royale, I forget which one it is, but Port Royal, I guess, Egles Saint Marie, Pointe d'Eglises, and anyway, they, they want a district community grant, and it's, I guess I'm giving them five hundred, but somebody else has to make. Move by Aldrick.
Okay.
Seconded by Cathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. And then the next one is the Camoz Hill Cemetery. How's that?
Junior's.
Junior's, Junior's not here.
Typically, we defer when they're not here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because we don't know the amount, or do we know the amount?
We know that he has five hundred remaining.
Okay, but that's not his.
But Chris, he has his discretion.
His discretion.
Correct, so we can't make a motion, we, we don't really have that information.
Okay, so we'll defer it next time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Next one, number ten, notice of motion, anybody, any councillors have a notice of motion?
For September.
Move on to eleven, question period, any questions from media, public? No? Okay. Move number twelve, we go in camera.
I'm moving recess and go in camera.
Okay.